Tech Exchange Committee Meeting, September 15th. We will, I could kick it off with TC 1419. And I think I'll turn it over to Mr. Holland to discuss the updates on TC 1419 from our special meeting last week where we had, and staff was very graciously turning this around pretty quickly. It looks good from the initial review. So, Mr. Holland, I'll talk over to you.
All right. Great. Thank you so much. Can everyone see my screen?
Not yet.
Let me try it again.
There we go.
All right. Okay, just a brief overview of this again. This is an amendment to the UDO to incorporate a three-tiered system for categorizing site plans based on construction type and level of impact. We discussed this in, well, in great detail last week. So, based upon those conversations, we went back and made some adjustments. And to go through those quickly here, for the Tier One site plans, we made modifications to I, to increase that square footage to no more than 4,000 square feet. To III, we made the change of use where the parking is solely determined. Section 712C does not increase the number of spaces by 10 or 10%, whichever is greater. And we modified the language in five for the construction, reconstruction, addition, repair, alteration, demolition, or replacement of a building having cumulative gross floor area of 10,000 square feet or less for, with a civic use as its principal use. It was all in one. For Tier Two, similar, we did the increase of the square footage to 4,000 square feet, but less than 10,000 square feet. For II, we excluded changes in use where the required parking did not increase by more than 10 spaces or 10%, whichever is greater. And again, we did the, modified the language for the construction, reconstruction, addition, repair, alteration, demo, or replacement of building having a cumulative gross floor area of 10,000 square feet or less with a civic use as a principal use with the exception of school, place, worship. In Tier Three, we just added the, the, the exceptions for IV, V, VI, IX, XIII, and XIV. And let's see, in the table of standards, modified those based on the conversation. And for the amenity, we excluded any sort of modifications for, for the Tier One. For the transition, we excluded again from Tier One and added the footnotes of A and C for Tier Two. And for landscaping, we added the, the new footnote for, which is G. And at the bottom in the footnotes, we added the, the new G requirement for screen requirements as described in Section 725 and Section 726 where applicable. That's all. That's, that's a brief summary of what we, what we included. And staff is available for inquiry.
Mr. Holland.
Do you want me to pull these back up? Would it help?
Well, I, I think having them, having them readily available would be great. I was gonna see if, if Commissioner O'Haver or Commissioner Fox had any initial questions. Commissioner O'Haver?
Yeah.
I think we can speak over this really, I'm used to like normal planning commission, but I think you can just speak.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Matt. So, a couple of things. Mark, thank you. And again, I agree with Matt. Thank you guys for, and well, big staff, guys and probably gals too, turned this around quickly. So, but just a couple of questions. We had also talked about the possibility of a combination of Tier One and Tier Two. And I'm, I'm not sure that I see that here with the overview that you've given. And then I'm curious about the parking demands on Tier One. We had quite a bit of conversation around that. And so if you could go back to that change on Tier One and make sure I understand what that changed, the way it's currently written, the consequences from our conversation last week.
Well, to address the, the tier, combining Tier One and Tier Two, there wasn't enough time for us to really address that, a combination of those two levels within the timeframe that we had before this meeting. So, we really worked with what, sort of with what we had, rather than trying to make any sort of combination of those two. My understanding of it, if anyone else has anything to add on, on our side.
That's understood. Thanks.
Yeah. Now, as far as I'm pulling up my old section.
It seems like it was, it was adding a, just, it is more so eliminating a few of the applicable standards for Tier One to differentiate it a little bit more. And I think that it's, it's Tier One or Two.
This is, this is Justin. And, and to the question about the, the parking that was added there in Romanate III was just, that's existing code language. And we just wanted to put that in there as an option for Tier One to make sure that, you know, anyone who is qualifying as what's called a plot plan today would still be able to, using that provision going forward as a Tier One.
Thanks, Justin. And to clarify, because I know we've run into this before. And I gave the example last week of, or was it this week? I don't even know. In DX, there's a, there's a, you get a break, I can't think of the right word, for the first 10,000 square feet of retail to provide parking. My understanding is, is that the way the code is currently written for plot plan is that even though you're not required to provide that parking because of the exemption was the word I was looking for, you still get kicked out of plot plan because the way the code is currently written, it says it's based on what provided outside of any of these exemptions. So, does this text, the way you have it written, does it remove that?
The way, the way the tiers are written is that if you meet any of the enumerated items there listed under the tier, you qualify for that tier. So, you don't have to meet all of them. So, if you're in DX and you otherwise qualify for one of those other items listed, it does not matter if your parking or your theoretical parking is increasing or not.
So, I guess then the, the answer, the simple answer is yes, it removes that.
It removes it, but it also doesn't take away the ability to utilize that provision if it, if it's beneficial.
Okay.
And so, and for a point of clarity, and this is maybe a little bit outside of this, but relative to that example we had at the corner of Central Street last week with the restaurant at the service station, their, their need to provide parking was that it was more than 10 spaces. They'd, if they were to go through this now, they'd still be a Tier One, but they'd have to go through another city process to be relieved of the parking. Is that, is that correct?
Not necessarily. So, yes, they're subject to the parking standards in Chapter Seven if you're a Tier One. So, if you're looking at the, the table, you know, and the table will tell you that parking applies to Tier One, what that tells you is you've got to go to Chapter Seven and look at, at the parking. And so, Chapters Seven has some built-in standards for when things are actually triggered as well. So, changes of use and small expansions do not have to comply or add new spaces.
Okay.
And, and if you're doing an addition, if you're doing an addition of less than 25%, I believe is the number, then you only have to add spaces for what would be required for that addition. Once you get over that 125% expansion threshold, that's when you have to bring the whole site into compliance.
Okay. I guess, and I'm just trying to understand this because I, I feel like this, I mean, if, if Brian is a professional in the field, like, you know, and he's having questions, I could see a lot of people, which is why I'd rather make sure it's clear. So, that, for that instance, and this is more so, I'm just thinking about small repurposing of buildings that probably have larger outdoor areas for outdoor dining. Like, that's really what this lens is that I have, just so everyone's clear. Because I see that as being, it's happening in other communities, and it's, I, it's really the only way to, you know, it's gonna be a shift in that experience. And so, with that as the case, you know, it was maybe 2,000 or 3,000 square foot building. I mean, any, if you're turning anything into a restaurant, it's gonna be well beyond the parking requirements than anything else, you know, that was there previously. And so, I'm just trying to make sure I understand what the, like, if this is actually helping instances like that, which I feel like is like the small infill projects that we're trying to help. And I don't want to go back through the kind of back and forth, or the intense discussion as we did last week. I really appreciate all the work that you all have done to this point. I guess I just want to make sure, you know, I, I'm fully understanding this and that my fellow two commissioners really understand this.
Yeah. No, those are, those are good questions. So, again, regardless of, you know, if you're changing from a print shop to a restaurant, which has a significantly higher parking requirement, the list of Tier One site plans, again, any of that, any item on that list, you can, you can use to categorize your project. So, if you're a change of use, for example, under B1, Romanate II, if you're a change of use of a 10,000 square foot or less building, it matters not what the parking requirement is today or what it's going to be. You're automatically a Tier One. And yes, the parking standards technically apply to Tier One, but what we know from Chapter Seven is if you're just changing use and not expanding, you don't have to do any parking improvements. So, the table in this, the table in this text is telling you that the chapter and the regulations are applicable, but you still look to those specific sections to see what you actually have to do.
Great. Thanks for clarifying that. And I guess that, that really solves all the issues with historic buildings and stuff like that too, correct?
With, I'm sorry, what, what type of buildings?
With his, like, like existing buildings in DX, like in downtown urban environments where they don't necessarily have parking, like the father and son building or something?
Yeah, that's right.
If they weren't to put the, the addition on that they did, but if they were to repurpose it?
Yeah. I, I guess, yeah. So, I guess what I'd say is increase in theoretical parking requirements isn't going to have the same effect that it does today.
Yeah.
Because, because there are other ways of qualifying as a Tier One site plan other than my parking's not increasing by, yeah, less than 10%.
Okay.
So, so Justin, thanks for sort of, you know, identifying me as a professional, but I don't know the smartest guy in the profession. So, I wouldn't be as a, as a, as the bar there for, for understanding, but I appreciate that. But Justin, that was helpful. And I think the difference is Section Five, B1A, and it, it says that site plan is required to comply with the regulations, et cetera, et cetera, for any of the following type of improvement. So, by using that word, any, you can pick one of any of those Romanettes, again, new word for me, below that Section One through 14. Is that correct?
Yes, that is exactly correct. One caveat being that there is language, and I'm trying to find it now, where if you fall, if your project falls under more than one tier, then you qualify as the more restrictive or the higher tier.
Okay. Well, and I, I guess, just to, to sort of drive that first point a little further to make sure I've, I've got a handle on it. The difference in that is there's now the applicant has any of these 14 conditions to, to base the Tier One on, or the requirement or the, the ability to submit for Tier One. Whereas previously, it was solely that 10% or 10 parking spaces, whichever was less. That was literally, my understanding was, that was the one hook that, you know, triggered the plot plan. So, we've done two things. We've added additional descriptions here, 14 different abilities, I guess, to qualify. And we've changed it from whichever is, ever is greater. And I'm thinking specifically of Tier One. Even the way it was, is written now, where it says increase in square footage is no greater than 4,000 square feet or 10% existing square foot footage, whichever is greater, would allow a, a small lot in downtown that has nothing on it now to come in with a 3,000 square foot building. And previously, that would have been 10%, an increase of 10% square footage, whichever is less would, would kick it out of plot plan. This allows it to stay in plot plan. Is that correct?
It depends on what the use of the building is. This is David Yor. The, in the definition of Tier Three site plans, which is in, on the, on the draft ordinance, it's on page four.
Yep.
We have establishing, establishment of a new use on a vacant property is Tier Three except for, and then we have several carve-outs. And those carve-outs are single-family attached or detached. It's civic use, it's park, it's a few of those items that are listed in the Tier One and Tier Two that are carved out. So, if you're, to take your scenario, if you're in a vacant, if you have a vacant lot in DX and you want to put a commercial use in it or an office building in it, that's establishing a new use on a vacant lot. That's gonna be a site plan regardless of the size of the building.
Okay. Thank you, David. Can you help me, can you help point me to where those carve-outs that are highlighted are? Four, five, six, nine.
The four, five, six, nine would be construction. Let's see. Construction of a commercial parking lot as a principal use.
Are you in the UDO, David, or are you in this text change?
Text change. In the text change, the, the section 10 to B1A, Romanate IV, V, VI, IX, XIII, and XIV that are listed in subparagraph C of the Tier Three Site Plan definition, that is referencing all those Romanettes that are on page two of the draft ordinance. So, so it's parking as a principal use, civic use as the principal use of, you got public parks, greenways, and open space. Nine is the tree removal exception. Thirteen, detached or attached building type for one and two unit living, and then construction of an ADU. That's the exceptions in Tier One. And then the exceptions in Tier Two are Romanate III, which again is the civic use, and Romanate V, which again is the parking as a principal use. And so, anything outside of those exceptions where you're introducing a new use on a vacant property would be a Tier Three site plan.
Okay. I, I think I'm gonna have some questions, but at least I'm, I'm looking at what you're referencing now.
And just because it was mentioned a moment ago, the, in Section Four, which is applicability, under A2, you'll reference if the site plan application meets the qualifications of multiple tier categories, the more restrictive tier category shall apply.
Okay. Um, Commissioner O'Haver, did, did you have any other questions at the moment? I was, we don't have any other questions. I was gonna open it up to the public.
Like I said, I'm, I'm just jotting down some notes. So, let's open it to the public. I, I probably will have some.
Keegan, are you able to?
Certainly. One moment while I pull up the attendee list.
Thanks.
So, the first person I have listed to speak is Suzanne Harris. Suzanne, I'm gonna go ahead and unmute you now.
Hey, everyone. How are you guys today? Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay. You know, I, this text change, I'll be honest, I, I haven't been able to dive into it as deeply as I have some other stuff. But one of the questions that I know I had asked, like, kind of some time ago, and because I hadn't been involved in every single meeting, I'm not sure if you had a discussion on it or not, was to have an understanding of how, you know, the, the, kind of a, an easier breakdown for, for folks to see, you know, what is and what is going to be under this new approach. So, so the, the plans right now that are plot plans and the requirements that they have, kind of like that listed out, and what that now is gonna translate into at the, you know, at the lowest level. So, if that, I mean, I understand there's, you know, criteria that may put them from a Tier One to a Tier Two. But if you were, you know, before required to do a plot plan, you know, what those requirements are compared to now what you'd be required to do as a Tier One, and how those compare, to, to have an easier way to understand where the big changes are coming, I think. And I don't know if that's something that's already been done, but it's a pretty, it's a pretty dense ordinance for text change, you know, to, to kind of dive into and, and understand completely with the, the table of applicable standards, you know, with all the, quite frankly, with all the dots and dashes and letters, and then the, the subsequent table towards the end that has everything. It's just, I don't know if you're gonna get as much comment as I think you would hope to get just because of the complexity of the way the information is presented. So, that's all I wanted to say. And I guess kind of ask as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Suzanne. I'm, I'm happy for staff to provide some sort of synopsis. But I, I also just, you know, being a part of the last few meetings and spending a good bit of time with this and having some very in-depth conversations, because as you said, it, it really is very detailed. You know, at a high level, Tier One is basically a plot plan. And at, at the onset of this, there was kind of the, you know, staff talked about the goal that Tier One is basically a plot plan. And basically, the goal is to widen the net for people who will qualify for Tier One. It's eliminating plot plans. And the, the real difference between Tier One and Tier Two is they're both pretty much plot plans. But Tier Two is, is typically, the only difference is that it's usually much, it has a, applies to much bigger sites, or a more intensive change. And it's, it's my knowledge that both Tier One and Tier Two are all less demanding than Tier Three, which is a normal administrative site review right now. And so, it widened the net a lot, specific particularly around, you know, duplexes being included in that on the, on the housing side, and, and any change of use on the commercial side. I'm just thinking about it from anything that's kind of low-hanging fruit to talk about, is that change of uses are, are much more palatable requiring with as a plot plan versus a full ASR. I'm happy for, you know, either Mr. Holland or Mr. Burke to expand on that, or Mr. Romanate.
So, is it, I'm sorry, let me ask what kind of follow-up. So, is it fair to say then, like, I'm thinking about sort of a subset of our membership, our remodelers, and the, the folks who do renovations on homes, remodels, additions in a little bit smaller scale, they likely used plot plans a lot more frequently. And under this new arrangement of how things would be categorized, you know, are they going to experience added regulations to what they are accustomed to that would add additional expense to their, and/or time, I guess, to their process? Not being able to necessarily tease all of that out myself?
Suzanne, this is Eric Hodge. We've worked a lot on that other ordinance itself for today's discussion. And I, I think I can answer for, for your question. In short, the answer is no. They're not gonna see any change.
That's what I wanted to hear.
They shouldn't have to do anything more today, or more after this is adopted than they do today. And maybe even less.
Okay. Appreciate the clarification. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Keegan, are we ready for the next speaker?
Okay. The next speaker is Pam Datus.
Okay, Ms. Datus. Okay, Ms. Davis.
Cam, I'm, uh, unmuting you at now.
I am just listening today. Thank you so much.
Okay. And actually, we did have one more speaker. Um. Commissioner Thomas Suo, but they are not on the call at the moment. If they do join, I'll be sure to let you know.
Okay. Thank you very much, Keegan. Um, bringing it back to the table. Um. Commissioner O'Haver, were, were you able to? Distill your notes down to any further questions?
Yeah, I guess I'm just trying to think through Matt. Um, again, sort of this. I'm thinking about any new building. Uh, going back to. The requirement under a tier three. So it's, uh, three C. Which talks about establishing, establishment of a new use on a vacant property. Except for these carve outs, a new planning. A new parking lot out of twenty-five spaces, a civic use ten thousand. A public park, uh, tree removal, which I'm not sure, but that's okay if that needs to be in there. Detached or attached one or two unit building and accessory dwelling units are all exempt. So basically saying those. Those can be built on a vacant property and not get kicked into tier three, but anything else. You think so? Is that right?
Yeah, that's correct. And because. Because currently the code says if, if your project increases parking by ten spaces or ten percent, whichever is. Less. If you are going to place a building on a vacant tract, it was always. A full site plan. So.
Okay.
We've created, we haven't made anything that's currently a plot plan, a full. A full site plan by that change.
Okay, and, and I guess, okay, so that, that helps you. So I guess my question then to you and Matt and Roberta. Is again, thinking about Matt, sort of what you've been. Hitting on are these small infill opportunities. And trying to. However, you want to, uh, sort of paint the picture of either. Making the net smaller for projects that need to go through full site plan, thus higher cost. Uh, uh, more exactions, uh, longer review times, et cetera. Are we, are we comfortable that? This text change is accomplishing that if we're trying to make it, uh, more predictable and, uh. Uh, less complicated for small info projects. Does the language as it currently is, does that, do we feel like it covers it? Looks like you wanna answer that, Bert.
I have a question. Did, um, cause I was not able to make the last meeting. Could you all discuss potential carve outs for, um. Buildings in historic districts and or that are registered structures?
That was not included, I don't believe.
Okay, that was a question I had posed at an earlier meeting and I'm wondering to your point, right? If adding an additional carve out. Basically in the tier three. Um, excluding. National legislative structures or. Infill opportunity in a historic district. Does that cover what you're asking?
I think it, I think it partially does. I'm just, I'm just thinking of, of examples of. Uh. Uh, an applicant who, who wants to come in, whether it be in a historic district or not. If it's, if it's somewhere in town where they want to do a small infill. Retail piece or it's a small box or, you know, I, you know, I. That they will automatically get kicked into tier three. Which again is, um, did I lose everybody?
No, we have you.
I do see it. You're back.
Are y'all there?
We can hear you. We can see you.
Okay, okay. Well, everybody just went blank. I, I don't know what's going on. So. I don't know what part I cut out. I'm just wondering, Matt. Um, if we feel like this is covering enough of, of small infill projects that we don't want to get caught in the net of going to tier three. Increasing the cost. Increasing the unpredictability, increasing the exactions. And thus potentially steering people away from doing small infill projects on new construction other than those five that are carved out. I'm just asking you and Bert a question and I definitely. There should be some consideration about the historic district.
Yeah, I mean, like something like a thousand square foot retail or office with two or three apartments above it would have to go through. A S R.
That's right.
Tier three. Yeah.
That's right.
And, you know, I. I'm just like with the logic. I guess in. And kind of. Around how this is written and how the existing U D O is written. I mean, I feel like it, it could be challenging to. To do that unless there was like a minimum. What will? So it says that construction, reconstruction, addition, repair, alteration. Demolition or replacement of any building, structure or parking facility where the increase of square footage. But I, I guess when it says construction, reconstruction, addition. Does that mean if there's a? If you have a site. And it's a parking lot and you want to build a three thousand square foot office. Or restaurant, would it fall into tier one?
No, that's why you gotta, you gotta go down to section five, B.
Yeah.
Three, three C. And they've got the, they've got the exemptions highlighted there right before the matrix.
Yeah, the old, the current ordinance, when you went through plot plan and if you found yourself there, you didn't have to continue reading. This ordinance, you have to continue reading. To make sure that you don't end up in one of those later two tiers. Because if you do, if your project isn't one of those higher, higher tiers. You automatically go to the higher tier. So that's a little different than today's code where you can just stop reading when you find your project listed under plot plan.
Right, that makes sense here. And I, and I, and David, I understand too, I think you made the comment or Eric, maybe you did that. Okay, that's not, we're not changing what currently exists. So, you know, I get it.
And we are. Yeah, don't forget, we currently today have two buckets. This has three buckets of fish and we've caught two buckets of fish. Before tier three. So there are more. Tier one and two fish today than there are. Plot plan fish.
No, I.
Some of the projects that you're speaking to. That today would automatically be.
Correct.
Site plan are gonna potentially be tier one or two.
And I think that that's the goal for these, I mean, especially I think we have in mind these smaller projects that. You know, I guess just from our experience, don't get built. Because of A S R. I mean, I know that. Um, you know, it's, or that are incredibly burdened by having to go through A S R. Um.
That's correct, but you have kind of honed in on basically if you have a vacant site today. And you're not one of those explicit uses listed therein. Yes, you do automatically go into tier three.
Right.
Which is no worse than today, but in your, you know, understanding, yes, it's no better either.
Right, no, and I, and I get that Eric and, um, sort of to Matt's point earlier, like y'all have done. And so I'm not being critical at all of how it's laid out. I'm just trying to get back to what in the, I guess this is our third conversation around this particular text change. And what I hear Matt honing in on a lot in, in what, what my experience is, is that. There are projects that do not move forward because they're burdened by. Be a tier three or a current A S R review. And so it's just a more general question. My fellow commissioners, if we feel like this. The way y'all have written it is, is covering what the amount of projects or the type of projects might be a better. Description Eric of, of things that we, we. Think could be maybe in a tier one or tier two, which would help get some projects off center.
Uh huh. And I think mentioning the historic districts, I think that maybe is a good qualifier to consider. Because that's a specific circumstance that's not citywide. But this ordinance, remember, is citywide. So this is going to apply to an infill site on highway seventy. Just as it would an infill site on Hillsborough Street.
Yeah, I, I guess in my mind, I would, I would. I would hope that. An infill site on highway seventy would also be able to move forward because it was less burdened. I'm, I'm not sure I'm necessarily. Trying to make it geographical. I'm, I'm just thinking about the size of projects. And. How we review those.
Mm hmm. Well, and I, I guess. Maybe what, you know, the, I guess it's, it's something like. It where it, it, where I guess the. The typology related to uses relative to location. Could be. Very significant in. I guess intensity, because I guess it's like if, if you have a sheets. That's thirty-nine hundred square feet. On. Point nine nine acres, I guess, kind of what you're saying, Eric, is that if. If you're going through this process and you, and you haven't, say, it was just like any project under four thousand square feet goes into tier one. Then. There's a lot of elements of review that say if a gas station wanted to go in, like. They're not going through. Those elements. Um. You know, I, I guess I just don't know enough about the backend of the development process. Once it gets filtered into one of these buckets as to where things are, are caught. And what's evaluated and how it's evaluated. Um. And so I guess that's where kind of Brian, to answer your question. A little bit of me wonders if, you know, I, I keep hearing that. From staff that there is, that there is a lot of work being done on missing middle. And like, I, I'm just kind of curious if. Perhaps there's a possibility that. We can see how this plays out. Um. And, and possibly have a little bit of time to see how this plays out if we do go ahead and move it forward. And, um. And be able to. I guess more thoughtfully. Address that question. When it, like through some of the missing middle goals. Um, but you know, that's perhaps me being a little bit more optimistic.
So are you suggesting we, we consider? Moving this out and taking it back to the full commission and then? Giving it a test run? Is that, is that what you're suggesting?
Well, not giving it a necessarily test run. I think moving it forward, I think we'll immediately see. It take place and hopefully, you know, I. I'd assume that we will start to get feedback from staff as to how it's working. And we'll have fodder for conversation. Around the. Um. Um. Around, um. Sorry, I, I just read something and distracted me. Um. Around some of the missing middle conversation, because I guess that, that's where, when you're thinking. About every range of use relative to size. Um. Then. Um. You know, it, it'd be hard to, how, how do you start to define that, you know?
Yeah. Um. No, I, I, I hear you. And I didn't mean to drag us in the weeds. I just, I just wanted to ask a general question and if you feel like, or if we hear back from staff. That, um. You know, it's, it's, we can't, we can't prepare and, and, and codify everything. Right? And so I get that. And so maybe I'm. Maybe I'm dragging us down a little bit too far. I'm just trying to ask a general question about. Do we feel like it's covering the type of projects, unique projects that might come forward on vacant lots? To, to regardless of where they are in town. To allow creative, innovative, small infill projects to move forward versus getting bogged down in A S R. And, and maybe the answer is. No, it's, it's, it's much more complicated to write that into this code because. As Suzanne mentioned, I mean, and as, as we've both said, this, this thing is meaty. I mean, it's taken us three conversations to get our heads around it.
Yeah.
Staff has been hammering on this thing for a while and so they're living and breathing it. So. Um. I'm okay if, if you and Bert feel like we want to. You know, we've, we've, we've beat it up as much as we can. And, and let's get it out and talk about it and, and see what happens. I, I, I'd be okay with that.
Uh, this is Eric. If I could speak to Matt's point, I can't recall specifically where it is in this ordinance. But I think in this version. There were tweaks. That would enhance missing middle opportunities. Unless the site was vacant. So for sites that have existing, say, an existing single family house or duplex. Or apartments and they want to increase density. I think there were inclusions, maybe David or Justin could point to it specifically. That would have previously. Not. Enjoyed one of the lesser tiers, but I think this version does have something that would, uh. Raise the threshold. And catch less missing middle. Redevelopment.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I, I, and I think that I, 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 I think also where, you know, having done like a little pop-up. Experience a number of years ago. Outside of Cam Raleigh, you know, I, I think the idea of like. Of being able to do. Say like maybe now some of these vacant lots in downtown are great, like. Outdoor restaurants or something where there's a thousand square foot pavilion with a kitchen and it's all outdoors, which is what you see all over Austin and a lot of these other cities. And it's like. If there's nothing there, if it's just a parking lot right now, I, that's considered vacant. And I guess. It seems like that's where most of the opportunities for, and, and when I say missing middle, I'm thinking about both mixed use. And residential. Because I, you know. Um, any kind of local independent. Businesses isn't biting off, you know, twelve thousand square feet. And so, um. On their first concept or, you know, for, for small little infill projects around neighborhoods and stuff. So. I guess I'm thinking more about, more about things like that. And I just, you know, is, is there a? Is there anything in the code around like lot size? Like, I mean, that I also could be a way to. If it's like a quarter acre or less, I don't want to just pull something out of the air, but like. Is there anything around that where it's? Where it's like, you know. What a reasonable, like small lot is that probable, like. I mean, a quarter acre piece of land, it's like. One to. To buy it or get control of it and then to. Spend nine months going through engineering and everything else for say, a pop-up restaurant. You know, we just aren't gonna see what. Um. What I think we kind of need right now. And so.
There's, there's also right of way dedication. There's tree conservation. I mean, there, there's a lot of. In tier three, there's a lot of exactions that. Could prohibit. Something like that.
Tree conservation would never apply to a site less than two acres.
One, one thing we did. Um, as far as residential missing middle, I mean, one of the biggest things in this is that a duplex is no longer. A site plan, a duplex, you know, under today's code is. What this, what this text change will classify. As a tier three, you know, today is a site plan. Um, it's a tier one. Um. Today, so that, that's. One thing that, you know, will facilitate. will facilitate from the residential side. From the mixed use side, you know, your scenarios, you know, downtown, a commercial, a commercial parking lot, you know, that's a lot that's being used as a, as a commercial parking lot is not necessarily a vacant lot today. You know, kind of differentiating from where, you know, you've got, you know, some gravel on a lot where one or two people might park. You know, that may be considered vacant, but an established commercial parking lot, I don't think would be. And just one final thing I'll say is, as Eric said about the lot size on these much smaller lots, there's not a lot of those tier three requirements that should have much impact. Tree conservation wouldn't apply. Right-of-way dedication is not going to apply, you know, downtown, those sorts of things. So I don't know that small vacant lots would necessarily have a huge burden when establishing some of those tier three uses.
Okay. And I guess, I mean, not that, not that this is like, I mean theoretically, you could, well, I'll ask this offline, but, okay, I guess that helps. Because I, I think that some of that early language too, in 5B, 1 Romanate, 1, you know, the construction of a building or structure. It's like if there's a parking lot there and you're constructing it and it's less than 4,000 square feet, I guess, under the logic that you're saying, something like a small little restaurant or something could qualify under that if it's on an existing parking lot.
Correct.
And for the, for the, that missing middle, if you look under, under tier one, under Romanate 13, it does discuss the construction of, of detached or attached building type for one or two living units.
Really, yeah, which, which I think is, it very much, you know, meets a lot of the goals of this, for sure. Thank you. Okay, with, I mean, with that, a little bit more clarification, I think around more of the smaller scale commercial stuff, you know, I, I'm ready to move this forward, you know, and support it. You know, I guess Commissioner Fox and Commissioner O'Haver, let me know kind of where you stand. But, you know, we've all spent a lot of time with this. It's, you know, I, I definitely think that the, you know, I don't know, I know that communication is so important. And, and so I also just wonder if there is a, someone in communications who's visually inclined through graphic design or user experience, who could, you know, I think in general, the more that we can visually show how some of this stuff is impacted, it could help, even if it's a temporary, like, hey, here's a quick helpful user guide. You know, like, I, I think that we're going to get a lot of questions around this. And I even know that that simple little, you know, marrying of arrows in the UDO, where they're currently, it talks about like ASR and concurrent and all that stuff. You know, it could be, be really awesome if we could get someone to help visualize this, maybe a UX designer, someone like that. Even if it's distilled and just says, you know, check these things or make sure to read these sections, you know, as you follow this path. So just so that we can be as accessible as possible for, for people.
Yeah, I was going to say the same thing, actually. I'm comfortable supporting this. I do think we're going to have a challenge communicating the nuance of it to a lot of people. So if we could consider creating a flowchart in terms of answer this question, yes, I go here, yes, I go here. Just, just to facilitate on the review side for you all and then also on the applicants coming forward side.
Yeah, those are all great ideas. We recognize this is a pretty substantial change to the code. And obviously, yeah, definitely recognize there'll be some training needed, both for staff and for, you know, external folks as well. So certainly we'll be looking to do, to do those things.
Thanks, Justin.
Sorry, Matt, I'm having problems with my mute, but for some reason.
It's all good.
I'm, I'm okay to support it. I want to follow it with you offline. If you, if you feel like we've covered sort of the example that you gave, because I thought that was a good example of what I was trying to get at, you were more articulate. If you're comfortable that that could move forward. And I agree, this has been, and I know a lot of people are waiting for this. So I'm, I'm happy to push it out into the full commission.
Okay. Then I guess I'll, I'll go ahead and, I guess I'm not, I might need assistance from somebody. But does this have to meet, if I make a motion, does it have the same structure as with full planning commission?
It doesn't, it doesn't necessarily have to. Mark usually prepares a consistency statement for when it gets back to the planning commission. I mean, if you want to say you think it's consistent with the comprehensive plan and in the public interest and move approval, I think that's fine. But Mark usually has a pre-printed consistency statement when it gets back to the full.
Okay, okay, all right. Then I will go ahead and recommend approval to the full planning commission. You know, with the understanding that this is consistent with the policy, not ransom plan, and that the approval of the proposed text amendment is reasonable and in the public interest for a variety of reasons, but that it helps with missing middle housing and lower barriers of entry for other types of, of smaller infill in the city that's been needing the thing.
Do you need a second?
Yep.
Second.
All right, there is a motion and a second. We have a vote. Do we do roll call or can we just put our hands up?
If everyone raises their hand, I think we can identify who everyone is. So if you'll just announce the vote.
So the, the vote passes unanimously 3-0. Thank you again to all the, the team of staff for really pushing this forward pretty quickly. I know that this is helping a lot of projects in the city, especially right now during COVID. So I really, really appreciate your diligence on this. All right, moving on to TC 420, infill setbacks and height. We can welcome staff that's ready to present on this.
Yeah, I'm going to do this one, Matt. Just give me one second to pull up the PowerPoint.
Great. Thanks, Justin. Actually, while, while Justin's pulling this up, I'm going to take this as an opportunity to run to the restroom for a minute. So I'll, I'll be back in a minute.
Can you guys see and hear me okay still?
Yep.
David, what happened to your cow in the back room?
I'm not at home.
Oh, that was at your house. Okay, my bad. I thought it was your office.
Sorry.
Thanks, I'm back.
Okay. Thanks for all your work on TC 14. I know that was a big one. Unfortunately, this one is pretty substantial too. So I'll do my best to kind of walk y'all through it. And then we can talk about it, answer any questions you might have. So TC 420 is related to building height and infill setbacks. There's really two main focused areas for this text change. One is the method of building height measurement. And that would apply to buildings citywide. So residential, commercial, infill, refilled, any building in the city, how building height is measured. And then there are some standards specific to residential infill compatibility regulations as well. Things like setbacks, how those buildings heights are measured and how their side wall plane heights are measured as well. So just a little background and history on these two regulations. The infill compatibility rules were adopted originally in 2013 with the UDO and had regulations for obtaining sample sizes from what's to obtain kind of contextual setbacks and wall heights and those sorts of things. And basically what you did was you looked at the two closest lots in either direction or three lots for the corner lots. And your primary street setback could be no closer than the closest and no further than the furthest. In December of 2018, TC 717 was adopted. That expanded the sampling size up to a maximum of six. It said that when you're obtaining a comparative sample for infill development, you could potentially cross some streets to get a larger sample and then change the way that the setback, how the setback was determined. Instead of the no closest or no furthest language, it was changed to based on a median, a variance from the median based on the width of your lot. Building height originally, I don't have a slide for this. Building height is measured from what's called average grade. And so originally in the code, average grade was determined by looking at the grade along the front of the building, the front elevation, and taking the more restrictive of the pre-development or the improved grade. And that would be the point from which the overall building height is measured. There was a text change then that expanded that to all four sides of the building. So instead of just looking at the front, you took the average grade along all four elevations, took the average of those averages and then measured building height from there. So that is current, current methodology for measuring building heights today. What this change does as far as average grade is concerned is considers it to be improved grade rather than the more restrictive of pre-development or improved grade. With the exceptions of those buildings that are subject to section 2.2.7, which are the residential infill compatibility rules. For those buildings, the average grade is determined by looking at both pre-development and post-development grade and then average.
Did everybody lose just?
Yeah, Justin, you'll have to back up a little bit. You froze there for about two seconds.
Okay, I'm sorry. Can you all hear me okay now?
Yep.
Okay. So I'll just, I'll just go back to the beginning of this slide. Basically, what the proposal is for average grade under this text change is making average grade to the improved grade for all buildings except those subject to 2.2.7, which are the residential infill compatibility standard. So for those buildings, we would still look at pre-development and improved grade, but taking the average of those two and going back to looking only along the front elevation and not along all four sides of the structure. There is an exception there for if average post-development grade is lower than pre-development grade, then we would measure from post-development grade. There's existing language in the code today about when lots slip upward from the street. And we would apply the same methodology of averaging the pre and post-development grade to those structures as well, just using the front and rear wall planes, not only the front. So here's a graphic that's in the code today that we can use. You know, you'll see how average grade is determined taking highest and lowest elevation. Again, under original, the original UDO, you would take only this front facade, take that number, do this calculation for both pre-development and improved grade, whichever one's more restrictive. You would take that average and measure building height from there. Under current code, you do that calculation for all four sides of the building. Under TC 420, we go back to only looking at the front of the house. But we also take the average of pre-development and improved grade and take the average grade from there. So the standards for residential infill that are changing, going back to a sample size of four closest principal buildings or three for a corner lot within 300 feet of and oriented towards the same street as the subject lot. So paring that sample size down from a maximum of six down to four or three, depending on whether you're a corner lot or not. And also giving a blanket exemption for cul-de-sac lots where more than 50% of the primary. And also giving a blanket exemption for cul-de-sac lots where more than 50% of the primary street abuts the ball of cul-de-sac. Those lots would just be off the hook altogether from infill. Whereas today, if there are other lots in the cul-de-sac, they are held to those standards. And then adding in a clarification that these rules don't apply in historic districts, street side overlays, or historic landmarks. As far as setbacks are concerned, once you determine that, you know, you have a sample and you are subject to the infill compatibility rules, there's two options at the builder, developer, homeowner's choice to use. One is the original language that was no closer than the closest in the sample and no further than the farthest. The second would be retaining that same language that's in the code today about basing it on a variation from the median, which is 10% up to 25%, depending on how wide the lots are. And then finally, their residential infill compatibility regulations apply to side wall plane heights. This change does propose increasing the maximum from 22 to 25 feet. And it incorporates multiple wall planes when there's projections or recessions of two feet or more. So each of those planes would then be measured based on their average grade rather than the wall as a whole. That's kind of a high level overview of TC 420. Happy to answer any questions. Also happy to go by, you know, through the text. You know, section by section, if you think that would be helpful, just trying to be thorough but respectful of your time, so we can take any approach you all want with that.
Thank you, Mr. Rametta. I guess Commissioner O'Haver, Commissioner Fox, do either of you have any initial questions?
I need a little bit more clarification. I've always had issues struggling with this masquerading, pre-development grade and post-development grade. So if I use an example of a residential infill project on a sloping site and the developer chooses to cable the site at a high end and build retaining walls on the side of the property or to the rear of the property, are those included in the calculation of height or how is that situation dealt with?
So under today's code, if you're subject to the infill standards, you cannot take advantage of the masquerading provision that other lots can. So if you are a greenfield development, you know, the code today recognizes you're going to be doing, you're going to be moving a lot of dirt, you may be installing roads and utilities. And so recognizing that you can then measure your building height from that improved grade. And so that kind of out that exists today is really just getting codified in this language and kind of simplified by saying average grade is improved grade. Unless, unless you are subject to the infill standards. What this says is if, under today's code, it's just more restrictive of pre-development or improved along all four sides of the house in an infill context. What this says is we're only looking at the front elevation, but you still have to look at both pre-development and improved grade. But basically you get credit for 50% of the improved grade because you're averaging pre-development, improved, and then you're measuring your overall building height from that point.
Doesn't completely remove what had previously happened in a couple of instances with the house on top of the retaining wall situation. Or an outbuilding or garage ending up on top of the retaining wall at the edge of the property.
It doesn't completely what it would do is in that scenario, the language in today's code kind of does completely take away that possibility. What the proposal does was the proposed language allows you credit for some of that fill that you bring into the site or move around, but not all of it.
Bert, were you gonna ask another question? You took yourself off mute, so I was
No, I'm actually sketching out what I think I understand from how Justin's describing it.
Okay, because I sketched something out too and I thought what I heard you ask, excuse me, is if we're only looking at the front, and I guess the example was a upward sloping site, I think. The exemption where you look at the front and the back. If the high side's at the front of the house, a new infill house that's oriented towards the street and it slopes down to a house adjacent or behind and a builder or and builds a retaining wall to fill a portion of that sloping site to build their home. How is that, is it only looked at the, is it only looked at on the front? Because you could see a scenario and actually we heard some concerns in one of our rezoning cases about that exact potential of being of the grade behind their house and a new development coming in, building retaining walls to fill and then putting buildings up on top of that retaining wall, which then they're, you know, limited to a certain height, but you take that retaining wall from the backside and you add another 10 or 12 feet plus the height. They felt like that was not an ideal scenario for their conditions. Is that is that another way of asking your question, Bert?
It is.
In the in the downward sloping lot scenario, you still have the sidewall height maximums to comply with.
That doesn't include the height of the retaining wall, does it?
Well, you have to include, so that calculation is done the same way that the overall height calculation is done, taking the average of the improved and pre-development grade. So you do have to take into account the pre-development grade.
For sidewall?
For sidewall.
And it's along that face?
That's right.
Okay.
That's right.
And while we're on that, I don't know that fully answers your question, Roberta, but while we're on that, did we increase from 22 to 25 because of a change in the way we're measuring? Because it sounds like we're going back to where we were and I know that 22 has been pretty typical for a while.
We changed from 22 to 25 really based on concerns we heard from home builders that were struggling to build market houses with a 22-foot sidewall height.
I see Suzanne still on, maybe when we, Matt, when we get to the public comment, maybe Suzanne could talk about that.
Okay. I also had a few questions. So we have that, we'll put a pin in that for the moment. Are there other questions at all?
Can you help me with the cul-de-sac part? I didn't quite understand that 50%.
So what it says is if you're building on a lot and your lot's on a cul-de-sac ball or more than 50% of your front property line is on a cul-de-sac ball, then you're just subject to the base zoning setbacks. You don't have to go through the sampling process.
Got you. Thank you. That makes sense. And then one other quick question, Justin. Make sure I understand, when you said on the sidewall for projections and recessions, we're going to look at each one of those as a separate facade and a separate height?
Correct. So when those recessions or projections are more than two feet, those will become basically their own individual sidewall planes and each would be measured individually.
So why would that matter if you've got a projection of a recession and it's along the side? We're taking the average of the pre and post-development. Why, help me understand the significance of looking at those pieces separately?
It really comes down to, you know, is it a separate wall or not? And we felt it was fair, we felt like when there's more than two feet of separation, it's really not one wall plane, it's separate wall planes and they merit their own measurement.
Okay. All right, maybe if Suzanne, when she gets on, maybe I'd like to just hear her thoughts on that as well.
So I had a question. This might be a stupid question, but it's more for clarification. So this building height is how all building height is measured, correct?
Yeah, so the overall method to kind of sum it up is building type is measured from average grade. Average grade equals improved grade unless you're subject to infill. If you're subject to infill, average grade equals the average of your pre-development and improved grade.
Okay, so something like a, so like a multi-unit apartment complex where only probably, like say one building fronts the street. What would the, how would that work with that? Or even say, actually, let's, maybe let's keep it simpler. Let's say in ADU on a, on like a site where it slopes away from the house. And so where would you measure? You know, I guess if it's relatively flat and you just build, I guess I'm just trying to visualize it, especially if it's not a single family house, you know, like that's just what I'm trying to visualize.
So what the language says in section 1, 15782 is you're going to take, you're going to determine your average grade along the building elevation of whatever structure you're building that's most parallel and closest to the primary street setback. So the front of that structure, the grade along the front of that structure is where you would do those calculations and measure your building height from.
Okay. And the average grade is, say you had to do some grading to level it out, is pre and post? It's not pre and post-development? If, because if it does not relate to, or if it's not subject to infill standards?
Exactly.
It's only post.
It's only post and that's because of that masquerading language that already exists in the code. What happens today is you know, you have that more restrictive of pre and post language in the code today. But you also have this out for the masquerading. So what it does is it creates an additional step for folks where they go through, they submit a masquerading permit to staff and then they get to measure from improved grade anyway. And so it's really just cutting out that extra step for those types of developments, saying you just, you get to be improved grade.
Okay. Okay.
Matt, you need to feed that dog, Matt.
Sorry. And so I'm here babysitting.
Hey, Justin, I think I think this is correct, and I think you were in one of the DSAC meetings about a year or so ago where we were talking about some of these examples. And I believe we pulled up an example of an office building on Oberlin that is three stories along Oberlin. And the driveway comes in off of Oberlin, the grade drops down and you end up with four levels or maybe even five levels on the rear of the building. And I think at the time, or maybe it was past or we've been talking about it and that would not be allowed, which again, I think members of DSAC were pretty vocal and there were a lot of experts in the room and practitioners about, you know, that's the way we've developed, that's an efficient way to develop. They showed a lot of examples of what, you know, what the impacts would be on an example like that. So I guess this is a long question, a long way for me to ask the question. What I'm understanding from this text change is that would no longer be an issue in that scenario, correct?
Well, remember, height is measured both in number of feet and in stories. So this change only deals with the measurement in number of feet. The change I think you're referring to was part of the Hillside study that was presented to you guys about a year or two ago. And those changes were not passed with the exception of a few things like transparency and maybe foundational heights, some of that stuff was passed, but the stuff relating to how tall your building can be or how many stories your building can be was not passed. The existing code gives provisions for downsloping lots where, or extra stories, and extra story in that scenario. And that language is existing and not being changed.
Okay, so to get it straight in my head, what we're talking about now is measuring height and that would be from the front. And so I guess in that scenario for Oberlin, I wanted to make sure that particular project wasn't overburdened. If it was in a, say a five-story zoning, well, in that case, then yeah, the height along the front, if it was three stories on the front, ends up at four stories on the back. There's no issue with that, but I guess you're saying it relies on the underlying zoning classification.
Right, if you're in a mixed-use zoning district and you're zoned for three stories and your lot slopes down from the street, you can be four stories on the back and three stories in the front. You still have to comply with your overall height measurement feat.
Right.
But you get that extra story in the back.
Okay. Got it.
If there aren't any other immediate questions, then we could open it back up for public comment.
I, I, I'd like, um, Suzanne, I guess just if, if she was amenable to it to me understand the 22 and the 25.
If that means I'm on. Well, first of all, I, I just want you all to, um, to know how much, um, we have appreciated staff's time and energy in working, uh, meeting with us, talking with us. Trying, you know, to understand the concerns that we had that we brought forth to city council back in January. Um, you know, just for a, a moment of background, you know, when the changes came to the UDO that um, really made a significant, um, changes to how height was measured and, um, setbacks. It, it caused the process to become extremely complex, burdensome, costly. Um, and you know, they're trying to, you know, the way we felt it was that they were, you know, attempting to write code. Um, and then by them, I'm referring more to the, some of the previous council members had some concerns from constituents. Um, but you know, to try and write code for a few unique situations and then, um, a unique situations and then applying that citywide, um, unfortunately sometimes has unintended consequences. And that's what we were trying to address, um, in looking back, uh, to reverting some of the methodologies to what, uh, had been uh, done previously while also, you know, trying to tweak it a little bit to make sure, um, that, that, uh, some other things were still addressed, um, that perhaps had not been addressed in that original language. So, um, I don't know if I have the ability to share anything or not, but I did, um, I had a drawing that one of our members, Tony Frazier, had put together that showed, and I can just, you know, reference the numbers if, if it's not, um, able to be shared, but you know, under the current, um, so in the sidewall height to your question, uh, Brian, was actually something that, um, we had concerns with going all the way back to when the UDO, when it was adopted in the UDO. And it was something, um, that we expressed at the time that we would need, uh, you know, felt very strongly that 25 feet was a more appropriate sidewall height, uh, as opposed to 22. Um, with the makeup of the council at the time, um, that was not, um, something that was put in to the ordinance at that time. So the tw- the 22 sidewall height has been difficult in so much as, you know, you have a three-foot, uh, crawl, you have, you know, just around or just below a foot and a half for your, um, your floor systems for both your first and your second floor. And if you do the math, which unfortunately this visual I have would, would depict it so much nicer than me just telling you numbers. Um, but it basically leaves behind, uh, about eight feet and about an inch and a half. So, you know, eight, one, uh, of a ceiling height or of a, of a floor height available under the 22 side, uh, foot sidewall height. If you are able to allow for 25 feet, um, then those other numbers remaining the same, the three-foot crawl and the uh, approximately one foot, four inch, um, floor systems for the first and second floor, then that affords, um, you to build or for one of our members to build a home that is more in line with what the market is demanding, which is a 10-foot first floor and nine-foot second floor. And so that's why the request was made to change that from 22 to 25 feet. And we understand that you are able to come off of the setback and go up a foot. Um, but unfortunately, you know, a lot of these lots are, are very restrictive and that's not always an option.
Suzanne, if you could, this is Eric, if you could email me that, I can share it if you'd like.
Okay.
Well, and Suzanne, I just, I just sketched it, so it makes sense.
Okay.
On the 25, I guess my only question, and the only reason I'm asking is because I've had, um, you know, citizens reach out already to me. And so I just want to make sure I understand. Um, we decide to push this forward and certainly we want to take into consideration if it's causing you all issues, but I guess if it's been 22 for a while and I, and I, I just looked around at a lot of the infill houses that have been built over the past few years, they seem to be pretty sizable homes. And so can you help me understand the difference between, I can't give you any specific examples, uh, but you know, just drive around. And, um, I'm just curious how those homes were, was it because we were measuring differently at the time those homes were built?
Um, I don't know if that was a question for me or for staff. I mean, my initial thought is that um, either those homes may have been built at a time before the sidewall height was, was in place. Or it could be that they aren't, that they have come off of their setback to afford them the ability, um, excuse me, to go up higher. Um, but that's just speculating. I don't, I don't know the exact answer to your question.
Got you.
Excuse me.
That makes sense.
Did you want me to talk on any of the other? I did send Eric, I sent that to you, but it's a PowerPoint presentation. So I don't know, it may take a a little bit to get to you, but, um, I did send it and it slides, um, 16 and 17 specifically that I was talking about. Um, I will say, uh, I don't know, Justin, are you able to go in your presentation back to the slide that had the option one and option two?
Yeah, I'd be glad to as soon as, uh,
Oh, there he has it up. Look, Eric. Okay. So current, that shows you the schematic. Um, and if you go to, um, presentation like full, then it'll be larger if people can't see it well enough. You can do slideshow. Um, but anyway, yeah, so that's height. And then the, the slide that he has up right now is, um, if you had the 22, or obviously it's just under 22, excuse me, 25 feet. Um, so that shows the difference, um, that change in the sidewall height would afford.
Yeah. I'll have to send you a picture of my chicken scratch. It's not quite as nice, but it's essentially the same thing. So I get it.
Okay. Okay. And I, I don't take credit for that. That was Tony Frazier. So he, and he did all, he did all this stuff and that stuff is pretty small. This was, um, and I would not do him justice trying to explain some of this, um, but this, this was getting at, um, a particular house that was built trying to demonstrate, you know, um, the difference in, in, in the height calculations was what that was attempting to get at. Actually, um, Eric, if you want to go back, uh, what slide is it? Let me see really quick. Slide 15. Um, which was actually the one right before the, there you go. This was getting at, um, I was going to ask a question, uh, Justin, on the options that you had in one of your slides that dealt with setbacks. I believe it was no closer than the closest, no further than the furthest. Or the other option was a percentage, I believe, if I'm remembering how that read. Um, and I, I just wanted to comment, you know, we talked a lot about this and, um, you know, I, I think the compromise, uh, definitely is better than what is on the books right now. I, we did have a couple of folks who were involved in the conversation who do a lot of work in, um, infill situations and provided some of these examples. Um, this I think is maybe a little bit, uh, of a better, there's another slide in here too, that shows some of the lots in Raleigh. These are, you know, actual lots in the city of Raleigh. Um, part of the point that, that he was trying to make was, you know, in the UDO, a lot of times when you're dealing with setbacks, you know, you see that nice grid street with the perfectly shaped rectangular lots. And of course, that's, that's just not the reality of the city of Raleigh and the way that the lots look. Um, and his concern was in those unique lots that you have scattered around the city like lots four and five particularly. Um, he, his concern was that the owners of those lots would be forced, you know, into a, I don't want to say a smaller, but I guess percentage wise, a smaller area at which they could put their home where they'd be, you know, more than likely, uh, required to bring it up closer, um, to the road than perhaps they would want. They perhaps would want to set it back a little bit further, given the scale of their lot. And I guess the question that he was raising really revolved more around what is it you're trying to achieve? Are you, you want every single home to, you know, when you're coming down the road and it's a curve to the road or there's topography up and down, what you see and how you see the homes is not the same as if you were driving down a gridded street and every single lot was the same size and had flat topography. Um, where you'd want, you know, every house to be at least 50 feet back and, or at least, I'm sorry, I live in the country, at least 10 feet back and no further than, you know, 40 feet back or something like that, you know, have a tighter, um, envelope. Um, but there was just some concern that, that they'll be stifling, um, to some of the more unique lots in Raleigh. So I just wanted to bring that up for you guys to consider. Um, and if, if, uh, Justin wants to pull up that slide, and I know that was something I guess that he would be looking at you all to discuss, I would imagine.
So, but before we get off this, um, Eric, can you, can you, can you go back to the actual elevation of that house? That one. So Suzanne, this is what, this like, right there, it just says the right elevation is, is 40 feet. Is that because it's setback? And I'm sorry if I should know this, but is that because it's setback X number for height?
I think, you know, and I don't want to misspeak on this particular drawing, um, because um, this was something that Tony had put together. And actually, if I, I'm trying to see real quick if that's, I guess that's the, the top picture is the front of the house. The bottom one is the back of the house. And then I think maybe the next slide down has the, um, the next, the side views.
I don't, to your point, I don't mean to put you on the spot and you just pulled this out.
Yeah.
Different. So I, I don't want to, I don't want to belabor the point. I guess I just, again, I understand doing the simple math. I just want to make sure because again, I understand and quite frankly, um, I live right on the edge of the historic district in downtown in a little small, uh, 1910 bungalow and the house next to mine just sold and I was concerned that they were going to build a huge house next to me. So I'm sympathetic to, to his concerns. And so I just want to make sure I have a good handle on what we're proving so that when people ask me, I can, I can justify how we've moved forward. That's all.
And I think, and maybe Eric or Justin can speak on this because they, um, were in meetings with us where this pictorial was used in part of the conversation and discussion. This is an existing house. This was built, I believe under the height requirement or the measurement of height with all four corners. And I think if you, it's not very easy to read, um, but in that top right corner, it has, you know, the front, right, left and rear. And then it shows the average of those four being the 40 feet four inches, maybe if I can see that.
Just to clarify, this bottom image is the right side elevation. That's not the rear.
Okay. That's the side elevation. So the slopes away from the street. Is that correct?
Correct. Down from the street.
Okay. Thank you. I thought I was looking, okay. So right. So the front of that house, and then it steps down as you're going back into the backyard and then slide 20 actually shows you the house. And that might actually be a good slide. I don't know if you're there. I'm sorry. I'm looking at this on my own, um, PowerPoint. If you go to slide 20, that actually shows, um, the, the legitimate, the actual pictures. I don't know, Eric, if you can bump to slide 20.
Maybe we lost, okay.
There we go.
Is that the image you're looking for?
No, no, the next, I think it's the next one. It shows the actual pictures, photographs.
It's
But to carry on the conversation, I guess on height, oh, here we go. So there, the top left picture is the front of the home. Um, and actually the right-handed picture is kind of showing you slightly at an angle, but it's also the front of the home. As you see the house dropping off, um, to the left-hand side where you would go around to the, to the, uh, um, garage. And then that lower left-hand picture is showing you obviously from the backyard, looking back up the street, what it would look like. So that, you know, I think, I think the point that Tony was making, and I hope I'm reiterating this correctly was, you know, this, this house, you know, is very, um, and again, I don't remember if this was something that was allowed to be built um, under the old rules or the rules that are on the books now, um, which I'm trying to remember what the point was there that he was making, you know, that is very much, this particular home is very much in, in scale. Um, I guess, I think if I'm, maybe this was one that was built, I think now it's kind of coming back to me. This was one that was built prior to those 2018 changes to the four corners. So I think the point he was making was this would not be allowed to be built because it would be just over the 40 feet as calculated by the rules that are on the books today. And the point being that this is very much in scale with the neighboring homes. Unfortunately, there's not a picture showing you a, a broader view of all the neighbors, but you can, you can see a little bit of the roof line on that one neighboring home. Um, and that, you know, it's very much in keeping with, with that. And the fact that you have sort of that, um, middle peak and, you know, the way this architecturally done doesn't make it overpowering. Um, but anyway, that's, that's what that was, you know, used is to demonstrate. Uh, I don't know how much more you guys want to discuss height. Um, either sidewall or, or the other, um, methodology for calculating height, but it has been extremely onerous, I will just say, utilizing the methodology of all four corners. Um, so I think that, uh, and staff, you know, took a lot of our, our comments and our concerns and our suggestions and, you know, took it back and chewed on it and massaged it. And they, you know, ultimately came up with the language that you see before you where you would take, you know, the pre, um, and the post of the front and average those, um, in order to come up with the point by which you would measure your overall height.
All right. Thank, thanks Suzanne. Um, that was helpful. Again, I didn't mean to put you on the spot and pull up a presentation that you didn't really have prepared for the questions. I didn't, it does look like maybe somebody has their hand raised, uh, as well. It looks like.
Yeah, I can, um, go ahead and unmute this particular attendee. I think it's Dicky. Um, so if it's the committee's desire, I can go ahead and unmute Dicky. So here she can speak.
Sure. Go ahead, Keegan.
Oh yeah. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes. Okay. Well, my name is Dicky Gephardt. I'm a, uh, Raleigh resident. I live 1924 Carbridge Way, which is up closer to 540 than it is 440, but I am also a builder. Um, and I, I've been involved with these, with these conversations and I just thought I could add a little uh, more detailed explanation. I know Suzanne's done a great job, but, um, not, but she really has. Uh, the, the 40-foot number that you're looking at on that previous presentation, that is the overall roof height. That has nothing to do with sidewall. That is just overall height, not sidewall height. And the, when you, I, I, any lot that is sloping away from the road with the four corners, obviously the way it is now, you have to take those two rear corners into consideration. So that house, that, that beautiful house on Claremont there, uh, that house was built prior to having to consider the rear two corners and is 40 feet and still very much in scale. Today, that house would not be able to be built because the roof height would be 36 feet because you have to take into consideration the low point in the back, but from the curb, which is where everyone is really, uh, you know, for where most people are concerned, it would be the same exact house and it looks great. And so, so that's where, um, that's where that was used as an example on that. So anyone who has a, has a, has a lot that slopes away from the road is, is really hurt. And, and this, that, that house you can see is not that bad of a slope and, and you know, country club hills, north hills. You know, you name it, how many hills we have in this, in the city. Uh, the, the no lot is, or hardly any lots are perfectly flat. So, that's where it is a big deal to consider the, those rear two lots or rear two corners. And I can also add information on the 22-foot height as well, if you'd like.
Sure.
Okay. So the 20, if, if you, on, on a standard home, uh, just say a 10-foot first floor and a nine-foot second floor. You have, you have, uh, on the, on the first floor, you'll have 12 inches. you have, you have uh, on the, on the first floor, you'll have twelve inches of floor joists, that's a nine and a quarter, um, a two-by-ten plus a two-by-four and three-quarter inch uh, plywood, I can get into as much detail as you want. But overall, you have twelve inches of a floor system, then you have a ten-foot wall, then on the second floor, you're gonna have eye joists, and they're usually about sixteen inches, uh, then if you do just a nine-foot ceiling on the second floor, uh, and then two-by, two-by-tens on top of that is your ceiling joist, you add that up and you're already at twenty-two feet, you're just over twenty-two feet actually, and that does not take into account the crawl space. So we, we talked, um, when we were trying to, and, and we want at least three feet in a crawl space to be able to run mechanical equipment, to have proper airflow, you start getting tight crawl spaces, and I'm sure most of you have crawled in them, uh, you know, they get pretty, pretty damp and, and moldy and all that, and so we're trying to get proper airflow. So that's where the twenty-five foot, we were actually hoping to go a little bit larger than that, but no, there would be a lot, a lot of resistance at that, but that, that would be a minimum to really get what we are looking for. And that's what the market's, you know, that, that, that's not twelve-foot ceilings, you know, most of the, most of the homes down in Oakwood wouldn't meet the twenty-two foot height. Uh, you know, the two stories anyway, so.
Yeah, that makes, that makes sense, and I certainly understand the, the, the average grade in the, in the all four sides. I was just asking specifically about the sidewall height, and that was helpful for you to point out that forty-foot dimension was the roof height, and I guess that gets back to how we, what the height limitations are, et cetera, so that, that was helpful.
And, and I, I can also add one other thing to that, the twenty-two foot, back in two thousand seventeen, we used to turn into, we used to turn our, our house plans in, and we did not have to put any heights on the actual plans, uh, so the twenty-two foot height was not enforced. Uh, and that was new two thousand seventeen, uh, when they started uh, taking into consideration pre-grade and post-grade, and I'm sure Eric or Justin would be able to verify that.
Okay, thank you. So, so I think, you know, just seeing the time and everything, I, I kinda wanna get a sense for where we're at. Appreciate the input from uh, public. I know that, so, so I guess a few things, I do know that, that, that the infill, that it's a, it's, it's very helpful, uh, kind of uh, stepping back to where we were before. I, I do know that just, this is more so, I'm thinking about a lot of this through cost of housing, onerous, uh, you know, process to build housing that directly impacts the cost of housing. And so, and I think that a lot of this is, that's the ones that I'm looking at it through. Um, and I know that some of the rules that were put in place in twenty-seventeen doubled or even tripled just survey costs, let alone other ca, a, a lot of other uh, review and co, review corrections, like through the process as well. Um, and I know I've talked to surveyors who said that that extensively, and, and also with the, a lot of the spot elevations and, and, and very detailed spot elevations, pre and post, and all of the topo, top, topographic information is incredibly expensive and time-consuming. And so I guess it's just something that, I, I, I know I don't have, I don't know, I, I'm, I'm still struggling a little bit to fully visualize how this is changing it while still being, like, making it a little bit more accommodating, while still making sure that we have a backstop. For some of the things that I think Roberto was talking about at the onset. And so, I guess, one more time, Justin, like, the, the measurement of the sidewall is the average from the front to the back? Proposed, the proposed measurement of the sidewall.
Correct, from the, from the front corner to the rear corner. Um, again, using both pre-development and improved grade, and averaging those two.
So you'd be measuring pre-development front corner, pre-development back corner, then post-development front corner, post-development back corner, taking that datum between the two and averaging it.
Correct, and then twenty-five feet from that number.
Okay. I mean, I do know that, that that's a, it makes a lot more sense from, as opposed to all sides, because that never really made any sense to me. Um, but, uh, particularly for any sites that slope away. Um, but the, um, you know, I guess I was trying to think of what Commissioner Fox was saying before, where if we're measuring it from the road, I guess it's, you know, thinking about walls that can be built. There's basically, you can basically build a wall that's half the height of the difference from the front of the structure to the rear of the structure. Because that will be the new grade.
Yes. But if you look at, if you're talking about a lot that's sloping up from the street.
It's sloping up from the street, okay.
Yeah, is, is that the scenario?
I, I was talking about sloping down from the street.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah. So basically, if it slopes thirty feet down, you could build basically a fifteen-foot wall, you can build a terrace, say, and have a pool and a poolhouse and everything all the way back. And as long as you meet that middle datum, like, you could have a fifteen-foot wall in your backyard.
Yes, as long as you're meeting your sidewall height under the calculation we just discussed, that's possible.
Okay. Okay, and, and, and I know that these edge cases are fewer and fewer as there's, I mean, it seems like everything's, uh, it, it, we're, we're just, I guess this is, again, so interested to see where we're at with, more so with the other commissioners, where we're at with like a land capacity analysis and age of building analysis relative to land capacity and zoning, to really understand, like, how and where we're actually making these rules for, because I feel like a lot of times, these rules specifically are addressing very small areas of the city, either due to the age of the building stock, the size, the, the size of the lots, the desirability of the location or the physiography. And so, you know, I, I think that, that's always why it's hard for me to think about this in a, you know, and I think why we've had trouble with it, because everyone has their edge case scenario. Um, I do think in general, this is uh, getting it back to a more fair, accessible approach um, through infill, and I think will help, I, I do know a handful of sites that were really fugly. Um, sorry, ugly, uh, from, um, from some of the, the other infill rules that were put in place in twenty-seventeen, some things that really were illogical, so, um, and, and I guess also from a development services standpoint, Justin, I mean, I think the idea of making things more black and white and, and easier for your team to really understand this, you know, and like, not have to, um, you know, for it to be very cut and dry, you know? Um, cuz I, I know with some of the other height measurements, it was hard even going through review, I, I know that there was a lot of question marks and interpretations, uh, just because it was so much, I honestly, it, it must have been just so much data, but, um, so, I guess, Commissioner Fox and Commissioner Hoaver, where, where are we with this?
I think it would be helpful, um, basically to your point, to have a couple of additional diagrams to help describe this. And so, what we might look at is some of the um, the way you described them, some of the more uglier um, examples, um, and looking at how this rule changes what would have been built there. Um, I don't wanna call anyone out, um, but I do want to consider especially now that we're allowed to have um, accessory dwelling units, which are going to be behind a primary residence, and people are putting it on their home to the rear, I, I do wanna think about what that rear yard um, situation is, because we do not have alleys in most neighborhoods. So you do have a rear yard neighbor in a different way than you would if you had an alley situation, so. Um, whereas a lot of people are worried about height from the street, in some of the older neighborhoods with sloping lots, where the high side is at the street and you go down towards your backyard neighbor, that impact is actually pretty significant in a lot of situations, so um, maybe just a little bit more diagramming, and it, it might help explain to me how, um, how that works out.
I, I agree, and I also think that some examples of, uh, with ADUs, because I do feel like through all of our work and all of our commitment to this stuff, like, that that is special for new infill housing, and so really wanna understand how we're working through how, how these impact that and how they're interpreted through this, and I think some diagrams could be super awesome.
Sorry, my, my dog was just going ape crazy too, I was trying to figure out what was going on. Um, I, I totally agree, I, I think we, this is definitely better than what was. Uh, Justin and I have just recently gone round and round about measuring heights on a project, to your point, Matt, and I do think this will simplify a lot of things. I think the graphics, the, the exhibits would be a good, my question is, do we have any kind of deadline on this, or where, where are we? Just as far as having to get this back out, or, cuz I guess essentially we're gonna add a month to this if we take another swipe at it, right?
Yeah.
I mean, I, I think it's, I think it's worth it, I don't, I'm, I'm not certain.
I think it is too.
I'm not certain we're hearing any clamoring necessarily, um, from
Yeah.
the public, and so I think the graphics, and I, I do think that Burt's sketch, which is kind of what I was considering as well, is worth can at least take another look at with the ADUs, so, um, I'm, I'm okay with making some requests of staff and, and with the objective of getting it out at the next text change committee.
I agree, I, Justin, did, did you have any other input?
Um, just to say, we're, yeah, we're happy to put some examples and some diagrams together and come back uh, with you for next time.
Okay, great.
I think according to the staff report, November ninth is the planning commission recommendation deadline.
Okay, thank you, so we're, 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 we're in a good, good situation then. Okay, great, well then we will table this, and we will hear back uh, at the next meeting with some diagrams and some clarification around ADUs and downward sloping lots, and um, we uh, I guess we'll adjourn.